We'll start by transmitting of Treasury Warrants 13, 13A, 14 and 14A. Motion so moved. Second. Motion made in second, all favor. It's unanimous. We have no minutes to approve, so we'll go right to our seven o'clock appointment with Terry Masiello, Elder Services Director. And she's here to tell us about the availability of the Fuel Assistance Programs, an update on grant awards and new programs. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Roy Stott, right time.
Thank you.
Terry, if you have an extra copy of the press? If it's extra.
All right, well, I kind of cheated. I actually put the good news in front first. I'm very happy to say that this year, the department was awarded $13,195 from the Leahy Community Benefits Grant that we applied for. This grant is a fantastic grant in the sense that it covers all our wellness exercise programs, and I kind of gave you a listing as to exactly what that money's going towards. We have, we have country line dancing that we've been having on a regular basis already that actually, from the previous grant, we've been able to cover. The class is extremely popular. In fact, we have people from Billreka or from the surrounding towns, Billreka, Reading, Woburn, that also come to this class, which is actually part of the grant because they're a part of Leahy service area, but it's great for peers, everyone getting to know each other, getting along. We also have an aerobics class that we're providing every week, twice a week, that will be able to continue. But what we decided in that, I kind of needed one, a little bit more, because balance and also strength is a very important piece of, especially for osteoarthritis, those types of things are very important to a form of exercise. So if you notice, what is your SBF, meaning, I'm going to play on words here, but it's Strength, Balance and Flexibility Classes. And those will be incorporated, so we'll actually have a type of aerobics class three times a week from a certified instructor. So that will be, that will be something new for us. And then something that we had a couple of years ago, we were the very first one, actually in the state of Massachusetts, to have it in a senior center, was the Total Control of Pelvic Wellness Program for Women. A very sensitive subject for bladder control, that type of thing, but a very much needed program because, you know, surgery isn't always the answer, medication isn't always the answer, can also be, you can start out with exercise. And this is a new, this was a form of exercise that we actually started out with, with the YMCA. But the teacher, we got very close to this teacher, and the teacher has actually offered to teach the class at our pace, and that would go on for seven weeks. So that will be something new for, for also this grant to cover. So we're very excited to have this, to have this, to work with us. We probably will be getting this money, the first part of the money, if not all of it, by the end of the month, by the end of October. So that's, that's good news. Any questions on that piece of it, the grant?
Out of curiosity, I'm, thirteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-five.
I know, it's kind of, actually, we, actually, there was a larger amount that I actually asked for, I actually asked for fifteen thousand. But what happened was because there was all surrounding towns and Leahy's funding is also, they're also having a difficult time, but their goal is to be able to make sure that they help the community. Don't ask me how, but this is how they figured the amount, and I certainly wasn't going to say no. So, but yeah, that is kind of a, kind of a strange amount. But it is, you know, I didn't give you what the breakdown is actually, the cost of each program, but like the Total Control Program, that's around a twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand dollar program right there. Any other questions?
Questions to comment?
Okay. Then I'll go on to the next page that you have here. I kind of gave you the form that I got from Community Teamwork. That's actually the, this is the Fuel Assistance Program. It officially starts on November 1st. And the amount that you're seeing is at for, and people for the audience, for, for one person, it's thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. For two people, it's forty thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. For three people, it's fifty thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine. For four people, it's sixty thousand and thirty-five dollars. But, you know, these numbers are just kind of thrown out there. People can always call with any questions or anything. We had so many people that we got into the program last year that as of August, people are, that are part of the Fuel Assistance Program are sent out renewal applications in August. And the goal for that, for Community Teamwork, is trying to get all the paperwork done before November 1st, all the renewals, so they can really focus on the new applications. As of today, we have done forty-two renewal applications. So most definitely, there is a need out there, and there continues to be a need, especially through this very difficult economic time. The Fuel Assistance Program is, you know, just like everybody else, they are having a little bit of a hard time with funding, so the exact amounts of money, they took them a while to determine, they have determined it, and as, people might find when they hear back as to being approved, that the sums might be a little bit lower, but they are, you know, they're not stopping the program in any way, they're just trying to make sure they can help as many people as they can. The other wonderful thing about this program is that also does a great weatherization program. Quite a few people, I have to say, oh my goodness, over half of what we've, for new participants last year, have had some type of weatherization done in their home. It could be getting new windows, insulation, new doors. They've really gone above and beyond, and their idea is, if we insulate these homes and make it better for them, they're actually saving money for the program. So it kind of works both ways for everybody. That program will continue. The other wonderful thing about the program is, once people are in it, they, they have a problem with their furnace in any fashion, even if their furnace just stops, they are eligible to receive a new furnace. So the program really does work in the benefit of, of the participant. Again, the new applications I do have, and also for anyone in the audience, to please feel free, I'm starting to set up appointments now to be able to, to get things going. They need to bring their, you know, just give me a call and I can make a listing of the things they need to get together, everything from their property tax to income, electric bill for proof of address, that type of thing. It's not a difficult application. They do have to sit with me to do the application, they can't take the application home, but that gives me the opportunity to be able to talk about abatements, the circuit breaker, property tax program, our income tax program that we provide for, free service. It kind of gets, make, make sure that we are really tapped into these families that could need additional help. So the Fuel Assistance Program works in several different ways, and saying that. The other way is that we do work with the Veterans Program, that if it comes to our attention, that they're not tapped into that, and it appears that they could be eligible. We have a great form of communication that, you know, I can give a little call, share that, that this might be a person that's eligible for services, and, and vice versa, and vice versa. So it's a great, a great source of helping the people out. Do you have any questions on that?
First of all, you do a wonderful job in your position as the Director of Elder Services. I know you reach out all the time, and you're really compassionate in what you do. Just to touch base on the budget for CTI, I've seen in the past, just say, for instance, somebody might get five hundred dollars for fuel, and then like maybe in January, they get an additional.
Yes.
Amount. So they do get additional amounts later on.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's hard for, it's hard for them to say, because sometimes at the, at the end of the year, as you know, at the end of the year, all of a sudden, another lump of money comes in, and they'll be able to disperse it. But to disperse it all at once, because they don't know how many, first of all, how many people are going to be in the program, and then, but usually January, even the beginning of February, they can get additional funds.
And also, if a person's under sixty?
A person's under sixty.
They go to the Veterans Office in Billreka?
In Billreka, correct, correct. And actually, I did, anyone that has any questions, please call the center again, and we can help with people under fifty-five, as to making sure they're directed in the right fashion. And I've also given information here at the Town Hall, so that people do have, have the information that, aware to who to speak to.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
You said it all, that's good. Appreciate your help, thank you.
If I could just mention one other thing that's not on there, just one really quick, is the Tal, is the talent show. We're having a talent show, and the reason I mention this is because it's intergenerational. It's not only for, it's not only for, for us, but it's also working with the high school students. And that will be in November, the first Sunday in November, and we have a great group of students and teachers that are helping, making sure this comes true, along with Audrey Reed, who is the producer of the whole thing. So tickets have started going on sale, but I thought I'd really want to mention it because I'd get back to the office tomorrow, and they'd be very upset that I didn't mention anything about that today.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I'll be leaving extra forms if anyone needs them up here for the Fuel Assistance.
Okay, our seven-twenty appointment is discussion relative to special town meeting warrant articles. Do you have to go over them?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a draft of the warrant for discussion purposes only, will be, as I indicated at the more recent meetings, we had deadlines of October 4th for petitioned articles, and we did receive two petitioned articles to go along with four articles that the town is proposing at this point. I'll be asking the Board of Selectmen to vote at their next meeting to approve the warrant, in the event that the Board wants to add articles or make changes, or if there's any need to do any, anything between now and then. So the, the warrant specifically, and we'll talk about the special election warrant later in the agenda, but this warrant is specific to the special town meeting that the Board has called for, for December 10th, 2011. It'll be held at the Cushing Gymnasium at the high school on Saturday, December 10th, at ten-thirty a.m. The first article is really the main purpose of the, of the meeting, and that is to determine whether or not the town will appropriate funds, in this case by borrowing, to expand those funds out of the direction of the Town Manager and the High School Building Committee for the purpose of paying the cost of designing, permitting, constructing, equipping, and furnishing the new high school, which would include payment to cost for any necessary site improvement. It would also indicate in compliance with the language that is provided to us by the MSBA, that the facility would have a useful life of at least fifty years as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren, and that the town would be eligible for a school construction grant from the MSBA. We need to put this specific language in that says the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant is the responsibility of the town, which is something that we, we obviously are aware of. So that the MSBA, we're hoping will end up funding fifty-two-point-four percent, four-point-four-seven percent of eligible and approved project cost as determined by them. So that would be the first article, because it's an appropriation by borrowing, we would need a two-thirds vote on that particular article. If there are questions, you can just stop me, otherwise I'll just continue to go through the articles. Article two is being submitted, it would authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire a parcel of land that is located next to the high school, the parcel of land that abuts the high school, that is currently owned by the Baptist Church. We have for years utilized some of that quarter of acre of property for the, for the school purposes. Primarily, it sits where the softball field is located and is used for various field activities, both by the high school and by the community at large. This would, I put this property in the hands of the town, and would also enable us to better utilize the site for the construction of the new building. And so you'll be asked later in the meeting to consider signing a contingent purchase and sale agreement with the First Baptist Church of Wilmington. We'll ask that you do that if you're so inclined, and it would be contingent, again, upon the favorable action at town meeting. We've established, and I know the Board has obviously been involved with this for the information of the public, this is something that is hammered out, and many details, because it is a real property issue, it's initially discussed in executive session, and we've established the price at fifteen thousand dollars for the quarter acre. The church has agreed to that, and in fact, have already signed the contingent purchase and sale, and so now it'll be up to Board of Selectmen to do so. This is a critical component of the school construction project, and I must say, very appreciative of the, the efforts of Reverend Grimley and the bishop of the First Baptist Church in this regard.
Mr. Chair, would this, this would require just a simple majority vote at town meeting?
I believe, because it's an acquisition, it would require two-thirds, a two-thirds vote, and that's something that I will, you know, ensure that we have the correct answer for that, but I believe that's what it would, that is what it would do.
And to reiterate, that the, the land has been used through generations, or for a number of decades, I suspect, by the town, with sort of a gentleman's agreement, for lack of a better term, between the town and the church, is that true?
Yeah, in fact, it was used back in the eighties, a little, a slight piece of it was used, and they wanted to expand the ball field down there, and that's something that we did back in the early nineties, when we expanded that whole practice field. And I went to, at that time, to Reverend Grimley, the same two folks, and that's probably why we should get this more solid, because one of us are going to leave one of these days. And they, at the time, were utilizing the Boutwell School for the Abundant Life School. They were renting that. The town became into a position where we needed to re-acquire that, and we could no longer continue that lease at, at a given point. But the lease was up, and we still had some time that, where we didn't need it, a couple of years, and we made an agreement that in exchange for the continuation of that lease, that the town would be able to utilize that property, and we expanded the property line a little bit. And then from that point, it's really been a handshake agreement, because obviously, they're no longer, they had built their own school, they're no longer at the Boutwell School. But the school department has been very generous with the church, just as the church has been with the school department over the years. The church has allowed the schools to have overflow parking in the Baptist Church lot, and in turn, the schools have allowed the church to use some of their facilities. You know, the, the school will play some soccer down at the Shoshine Field, they'll use it, tennis courts, they'll use some of our, our fields. So it's been a good relationship. But we both felt, particularly because of the, the need to expand the, the school footprint, we both felt it was time to try to, you know, almost, quantify is probably not the right word, but to put this into place.
Formalize it.
And formalize it, thank you. And that's, that's what it does.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The Board's, the, the third article would essentially authorize the town to impose and record a lien against a private property for expenses that are incurred by the town when it removes trees, or branches, or bushes, or anything else that is considered to be a danger, a public safety danger. And this was prompted, as the Board recalls, by action that you had to take this past summer, when a homeowner on Lowell Street refused to correct a situation, a very dangerous situation, with a, with a tree that appeared ready to fall onto the street, and was deemed a public safety issue by the Department of Public Works, and substantiated as such. And so we had no mechanism, although we had to pay for the cost, we had no mechanism in which to lean those charges. And this now provides us with that mechanism, and in fact, enables us to go back to that particular case and lean, lean the charges forward. And so that's what we would intend to do if the Board, or if the Board obviously puts this on the warrant, and if so, the townspeople vote in favor. The recommendation, this was prepared by Town Council at our request, the recommendation of the Town Council was to take, go one step further and to include this in the, in the bylaws, recognizing that from time to time, just a simple town meeting action, you know, may not be, be followed, and it's important to be able to give a public notice in a way in which the, the public would understand, and that would be via the bylaws, as opposed to the record of a town meeting. This, this would in fact be qualified in the bylaws, and so he really is recommending that there be a secondary article that would quantify the action adopted under the article that I just spoke about, and that would be a lien for certain tree removal cost placed in the actual bylaws of the town. And that's on recommendation of Town Council.
Maybe you said it, I'm sorry. Absent this amendment to the bylaws, did you, did you say that we really have no recourse currently, not, there's no mechanism in place for us to reimburse, be, become reimbursed by the resident in question?
For the, for these kinds of charges.
For these kind of charges?
Right. Without, without Article Three. Article Three really does that. Article, Article Four, you know, would reflect an affirmative vote at the town meeting, but it would also notify the public that we have this authority, and it would notify them in a more, I think, salient way, because it would be within the bylaws themselves, and that's really the purpose. You could still, you could still adopt Article Three without adopting Article Four. However, Article Four is probably more user-friendly in terms of giving notice to the public that there is a bylaw that, that says you can't do this, and that we have a right to impose charges if you don't take care of your property and that property becomes a danger to the public.
And it gives the Town Manager and, who are the authorized individuals?
It's Town Manager and Town Council with the town's tree warden.
Thank you. Yeah, those are some of the.
And it's based upon the vote of the Board of Selectmen. So the Board would, in each case, if there was a specific case, for example, the Board would have to, would have to vote to do that, and that would have the authority to go ahead and.
Okay.
And execute the, the intent of the Board.
That's what I was kind of getting at, is that checks and balances.
Right, right, that's still there.
Great, thank you.
Then there were two petitioned articles. We have a petitioned article from William and Laura Schultz, asking to buy town-owned property on Boutwell Street. I'm not familiar with the property in question at this point. The article did come in this past week, and the Property Review Board will be taking a look at that. There will be a public hearing by the Property Review Board in conjunction with the Finance Committee Hearing, and then we'll learn more about what the intent of the residents are, and there'll also be a determination that I will make after consulting with the Property Review Board regarding whether or not the property is surplus to the needs of the town. If it is surplus to the needs of the town, then we would ask the assessor to establish a fair market value, and then the property itself will, would go out for a competitive bid. And the final article that was submitted, was submitted by Kevin F. McDonald, and the article reads, "To see whether the town will vote to preserve Wilmington High School and prevent it from being demolished." So those are the six articles, and if the Board has any, any questions at this point, otherwise, we'll come back with these articles, refine them if they need to be. Obviously, we can't do anything with the petitioned articles, they go in the way they came in, and I'll ask the Board on October 24th to approve the warrant.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The Board has correspondence from William C. Campbell, the Woburn City Clerk, requesting support of legislation on his House 1972 and Act Regulating Election Primaries. The, the letter was addressed, from Mr. Campbell, the Woburn City Clerk, was addressed to Town Clerk Sharon George, and he provided a resolution in support of this particular legislation that's now pending before the legislature. He asked that it be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen for placement on the agenda. He did this with all the clerks throughout the Commonwealth. And then he indicates that, and I'll, I'll read it, because this is his position, "We'll ensure that, the adoption will ensure that the votes of our troops serving overseas will count on Election Day and save taxpayers at least eight million dollars by streamlining elections. Department of Defense Federal Voting Assistance Program and written testimony supporting the bill noted that the bill is in line with federal law and is also in line with a number of states that have recently moved their primary elections earlier in the year to comply with this federal requirement." He indicates that in 2010, the state election, the Commonwealth requested a waiver from the Federal Move Act, which requires that at least forty-five days before an election, ballots be sent to Americans overseas. The only reason for the Secretary's waiver request was due to a late primary. The temporary solution was a bill that allowed our troops to vote by fax or email, but the voter was required to sign a statement waiving his or her right to a secret ballot. He indicates the deadlines for 2012's election are approaching quickly, and he's hoping that you can support this change. What the change would do, it would move the state primary, which is currently scheduled for September 18th, to a date in June. And that date in June would coincide with another movement that they're looking to accomplish, which would be to move the presidential primary from March to June. So that the net effect would be, instead of having a state primary in September with a general election in November, the state primary would be held in June with a general election in November, and it would be held, in this case, on the same date as a presidential primary, which would need to be moved from March to June to coincide with a new state primary date. I'm sure I've thoroughly confused everybody listening. They're estimating major savings, I cannot speak to that certainly. I can tell you that the town would probably save about six thousand dollars every four years if this were to happen. The proponent, Mr. Campbell, believes that the state would be better served by moving the primary, because by moving it to June, he believes that Massachusetts would have more to say in the, in the presidential primary. I'm, I'm not sure if that's correct, because in many cases, the. I'm not sure if that's correct because in many cases, the presidential primary, the process is already determined who the nominee of each party is going to be well before June, but that's the position that this person has indicated. We asked the town clerk for a recommendation and I'll read what her recommendation was. She writes, "Let me start by saying I am very much in favor of our military forces and overseas residents receiving election ballots in a timely manner. Changing the presidential primary in the fall, state primary to the first Tuesday in June will work well for cities as they have local elections every two years. However, for towns, it would create a hardship as early and late spring as the time for annual town election and town meeting. I believe this change would be very confusing to voters as the ballot would be extremely long to provide space for each office. The lateness of the presidential primary in June will have little to no significance. All other primaries will have been voted and it is my feeling that we would have a very low voter turnout, which in turn would affect the state primary as well. Usually, the presidential primary generates a decent voter turnout, but if the outcome is already predetermined prior to the Massachusetts primaries, there will be no reason for most voters to come to the polls. Not only will the president's primary change, but this is the election every four years whereby ward and town committees draft their slate and from my reading, this format would also change. Change is difficult to embrace and I am all for change, but I feel for this legislation to pass for the next cycle of elections in 2012 would be very hasty. Town and city clerks' offices are supposed to be provided with absentee ballots 45 days prior to an election, but we are at the mercy of the state as to the actual receiving of the ballots. I recommend against adoption of this legislation." And the only other information that I've gotten is the town clerk has indicated that there have been some communities that have voted for the adoption, specifically South Beach, Medfield, Lancaster, Sudbury, and Rentham. I don't know what other communities have done. So, this is before the board. The board can choose to take an action in support, they can choose to take an action in opposition, they can choose to take no action, or they can choose to make a recommendation of some hybrid of some type where it wouldn't exactly be the way it's been described.
Mr. Chairman, simply through the town manager, town clerk's opposed to it. Mike, town clerk, I mean, I would take her recommendation and support her recommendation and send it forward maybe to be counted that we're in our position to what they're trying to do and we support the town clerk's decision.
I agree. I agree how she started out wording her letter that, "Let me start by saying I'm very much in favor of the military forces and residents receiving election ballots in a timely manner." Having said that, I think this bill goes far beyond that. I downloaded the bill, the whole bill, over the weekend and went over it and there's like one paragraph in there that basically says, you know, it's for getting the troops, to accommodate the Move Act, the troops voting in a timely, getting their ballots 45 days before. So, I agree with her also that it's a pretty important issue and we don't want to hastily go into anything of changing so many different rules and dates. And if it is just for getting the ballots over in a timely manner, why all the way back to June? Why not one month back, change it one month? If you do the math, and I'm not sure you can correct me on this, Mike, it's between the elections, you would have 49 days to get the ballots out. In essence, four days. Well, it might be a little more, the presidential elections in March.
Yeah, when I, yeah, the primary for 2012, the state primary, September 18th and the general election is November 6th, so that's 49 days. So, I mean, there's an obvious issue with being able to meet the federal mandate of 45 days for our military personnel, which is an important goal, you know, I agree with the clerk, but you know, I'm not, I'm willing to listen to people who know better than I how much time it takes from the date of the primary to adequately get ballots in the hands of our military personnel and give them sufficient time to send them back. So, I'm willing to hear that, but I have a hard time believing you have to go all the way back to June and then the whole prospect of changing our federal, you know, the primary date for our presidential and other federal elections, that to me, bumping that back to June has a chilling effect on the Massachusetts voter and the effect they're going to have on those elections. So, yeah, I think you're right. We talked briefly, it was 49 days that I had thrown at you just based on 2012.
Other questions or comments?
No, I think the feedback that was provided makes perfect sense and I would certainly support the position of the town clerk at this time.
Yeah, I've been on the fence since I got, since we got this packet and had to read through this. On its face, you know, when you read the resolution, it all sounds real good, at least it sounded good to me. We're going to save somewhere, or at least according to these folks, we're going to save somewhere up in the vicinity of $8 million by streamlining elections. The military will have their voices heard and have the ability to have their vote be private and be counted and all the good things that we want to hear. And so, you know, I think I already heard what I wanted to hear from you Lou, as veterans' agent here in town, you have so much direct contact with our service folks. If you had said, "This is a windfall, this is great, I'm delighted, we'll finally have something in place to be able to accommodate our service people," I'm not hearing you necessarily say that. So, like Mr. Newhouse said, I like to listen to the experts and I consider you an expert, at least in regards to that kind of stuff. I don't know, what comes into my mind is the dramatic shift back to June makes me feel like there's something else at play here and I don't want to necessarily project or insinuate anything about Mr. Campbell, who seems to be sponsoring this, but I wish I had a better understanding of why he was making this recommendation in this manner and I don't feel like I have enough information to be able to take action. The other side of it is, in the absence of us supporting this, this still is a House resolution, whether we support it or not, this is really just us or his attempt to get cities and towns to be a vocal proponent of this resolution at the State House. He's going, I imagine he's going to push this forward whether we vote in favor or not. So, I'd be first personally, I'd like to not necessarily say I'm opposed to it, but I would be very receptive to hearing more and maybe talking or hearing more about some maybe middle-of-the-ground accommodations, looking at August or looking at some other dates that perhaps make more sense. But, you know, that's where I come down on the subject. I'm not opposed, but I'm not in favor. I wish we could get some more information.
Any other questions or comments or a motion? Do we want to take any action or no action?
I move that we take no action. If you get a second, I'll explain my thought.
Okay, we have a second?
Yeah, my thought in moving to take no action is on the specific resolution that's before us, we are not adopting it. I think that to the extent that our legislative delegation is interested in hearing where we're coming from, I think that we've made that pretty clear. Taking no action, I think, leaves the door open for anyone, whether it be the proponents of this resolution, whether it be our legislative delegation, leaves the door open for them to come to the board looking for support for any measure that would specifically address the ability of our servicemen and women to have the opportunity to vote in a way that, you know, protects their constitutional right to vote. So, there's no mixed message there. Just take no action on the resolution before us. I've not heard anybody object to giving servicemen and women the opportunity to vote. I think that's as clear as day that we all want to support that. So, that opportunity is open for folks who might have a measure to propose to us.
Okay, any other comments or we have a motion made in a second and all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you have a memorandum from me regarding some railroad crossing repairs. I want to give notice to the board and to the public that repairs have been scheduled to take place during the month of October at three different railroad crossings in Wilmington. Crews from the Mass Bay Commuter Railroad Company are planning to perform repair work at the Glenn Road, Clark Street, and Salem Street. Salem Street is the Wildcat Line closest to Bigger Avenue at those railroad crossings. The plan is to repair the crossings on a Friday night, Saturday morning schedule. The work would take place beginning at approximately 11:00 PM on Friday and likely conclude by noon time on Saturday or earlier hopefully. The MBCR believes that a worst-case scenario may result in an extension of time to 2:00 PM. They're really only looking at a difficult repair at the Salem Street line, but even there is, the Salem Street Crossing, even there they believe that it will all be done by the morning. So, the repair schedule for each crossing will be Glenn Road to be done this Friday, October 14th, and concluded on Saturday. Clark Street to begin on Friday, October 21st, and then to be concluded the next day on the 22nd. And Salem Street on Friday, October 28th, to conclude on Saturday, October 29th. The work requires that the roadway be closed at the crossings, therefore precluding vehicles to cross. Detours will be established and the Mass Bay Commuter Railroad will set up three notification signage as well as detour and warning signs during construction. We will also use the town's automated telephone notification system to advise the affected neighborhoods of the temporary detour. Information is also going to be included and has been included on the police and DPW websites. Some of you may have noticed that there was some signage on Clark Street this past weekend. That has been moved because Glenn Road is going to be the first crossing repaired. We did not want to interfere with the flu clinic that is scheduled for the weekend of the 22nd. So, again, Glenn Road on October 14th and 15th, Clark Street, October 21st and 22nd, Salem Street on October 28th and 29th. The board has correspondence from Clarissa Rowe, the chairperson of the Arlington Board of Selectmen, Richard Cannelli of the Lexington Planning Board, and Hank Mann, Selectmen Chairman. Relative to the NPO elections, the Metropolitan Planning Organization elections, they're directed to the chairman, seeking his support. There are several positions open and this year there are actually two contested races. So, you've received communications, I know, from several different communities. The one that is specific really to Wilmington is the North Suburban Planning Council seat and there is only one candidate and that is Mayor Scott Galvin from Woburn. But, there are also several other positions and the chairman is, by virtue of his office, is the only person who may vote. With regard to the interest of Arlington and Lexington, they're running for two at-large town seats and the Selectmen, a Selectmen from each of the following towns, Arlington, Needham, Lexington, and Natick are running for a contested, that contested seat. And then there's also a contested seat from the Southwest Area Planning Committee, someone from Midway and Hawkington are running. The chairman will have to vote by October 25th unless you intend to go to the actual vote, which is on the 26th and we can provide you with the election ballot. I suspect if anybody has any recommendations, you can make them directly to the chairman. We have correspondence from Jane Lyman of Comcast Xfinity regarding programming changes and they provide information about programming regarding PBS channels as they have to do with HD and all digital formatting. Customers in the town have been provided the information by a bill message back in the summer. However, they're sending this information to the board with apologies because normally they send this out in advance and they recognized that they made this change without having informed the licensing authority and they apologized for that, but provide you with that information. The board is being asked to sign the contingent purchase and sale agreement with the First Baptist Church of Wilmington. I think we probably covered that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, specifically, we're talking about approximately a quarter of an acre, 10,299 square feet that's identified on Assessor's Map 63 Lot 9, which really is property that lies adjacent to Wilmington High School. And the benefit of getting this property is to enable the town to utilize a greater footprint for the construction of a new high school. The agreed sale price is $15,000. If the board is inclined to vote for this, and I recommend that they do, it would be held obviously until there is an actual vote at town meeting. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I make a motion that we send to the purchase and sale agreement as stated by the town manager.
Second? Motion made in second, all in favor? Do you have a question?
I'm just sorry, I was just reading something quickly Amal said, thank you.
Okay. Unanimous? The board is being asked to sign the warrant for the special election to be held on December 6th. Now, this has got to do with the debt exclusion. The question has been forwarded to the MSBA and drafted by myself and Town Council to comply with the MSBA and DOR regulations. And the question is, shall the town of Wilmington be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay the cost of designing, permitting, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new high school, including the payment of cost for any necessary site improvements, said high school to be located at 159 Church Street, Wilmington, Mass? And then there would be a spot for yes and a spot for no and that would essentially be the one question, the sole question, that would be on the ballot on December 6th. That particular election would, is a Tuesday, the polls would be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and voters would be asked to assemble at the regular voting precincts at Boutwell School, Wildwood School, and the Town Hall Auditorium. Just by way of review, a debt exclusion enables the town to raise funds in excess of the amount of the town's levy limit and passage of a debt exclusion provides the town with temporary additional taxing capacity. A debt exclusion does not permanently raise property taxes, but allows the town to assess taxes for a specific period of time, which is consistent with what happened with the Public Safety Building and the Middle School. So, I would recommend that the board vote to approve the warrant and if so, I would deliver this to the town clerk and ask it to go out for posting. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move that the board sign the warrant for the special election to be held on December 6th, 2011.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. I'd ask that you sign the three copies that are in the folder. Thank you. The board is being asked to consider the request of Town Clerk Sharon George to appoint as election workers Ann Peters, Carolyn Kenny, and Nancy Beals, all obviously residents of the town of Wilmington. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve the three residents as read by the chairman for election workers.
Second? Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. The board has a request from Reverend Joseph Pino, the rector of St. Elizabeth's Episcopal Church here in Wilmington, to use the 4th of July parking area... Church here in Wilmington, to use the Fourth of July parking area for the blessing of the animals on October 22nd from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. He notes that this is an event that's open to the public, that is being sponsored by St. Elizabeth's Church, and he indicates today in an email that the event would offer free consultations with veterinarians from the area and specialists in animal behavior training. But he's looking for the approval of the board to conduct a blessing of the animals ceremony on Saturday, October 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to noon at the Fourth of July parking lot.
They will have to clean up after themselves. It's no joke, though.
Yes, and I'm glad, you know, you mentioned that because if the board is so inclined, we would put stipulations asking them to make sure dogs are on leashes, et cetera, and to obviously secure and police the area appropriately.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
With that being understood, I make a motion to grant it, along with the language of the town manager stated in a nice way.
Okay, we have a motion? And a second? All in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Thank you. Public comments?
George Ling, Public Public Affairs Street. Actually, a point of information. I didn't receive my real estate tax bill in the mail. Usually, we're pretty good about sending those out a month ahead of time, and I called the collector's office today, and they told me that there was a folding machine error in sending out the real estate tax bills, and they were aware of an undetermined amount of real estate tax bills that did not go out. I'm told that I'm going into receiving my tax bill, gonna put another one in the mail, but I just make a public comment that that might be a point of public interest, people don't track their bills. There was apparently an undetermined amount of real estate tax bills that did not go out in the mail. Just wanted to pass it on as a comment.
We believe that there were approximately, you know, seventy-five or so bills that may not have gotten there, and most people called right away because what happened is, in some cases, the company, when they were doing the mailing, in certain instances, put two bills in one. And so, I appreciate you bringing that up. We are looking at that, and obviously, we would keep that in mind in the event that somebody didn't get their bill in time and would not impose a penalty. Thank you.
As a point of information.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Mr. McDonald?
Yes, I have a few questions, and I have something I'd like to give the board. Mr. Carr, I know that in Wilmington, we like to try to save money, and I'm appreciative of the recycling center, and I know we turn our leaves into compost, which turns it into loom, and I guess we take our street sweepings, and we actually can save money making loom. Is that correct, topsoil?
The extent that we can save money, I'd have to refer that to the Department of Public Works, and you can certainly ask Mr. Onisite yourself, or I'd be happy to inquire as to what money is made as a result of composting. What we do do is, we allow residents to come down and take that composting. That's been a service that we've allowed residents for years. We do use some fill material, as you know, certain fields, ball fields, but we also offer residents the opportunity to come down via their punch card to pick up compost.
Well, the reason I ask the question is, I had some concerns about that because, first of all, the street sweepers do a great job. Unfortunately, we have a problem in town, and I know I've found them on my street, and I've heard a lot of other people finding them around town, and that is syringes, because we have a massive heroin problem in town. And what's happening is, the street sweepers sweep up these syringes, and they get mixed in with the sand, it gets mixed in the loom. I'm just concerned that on one of these ball fields, there might be a needle that's infected that could stick into a child, and I was wondering if the town would look into that, what I would consider to be a serious problem. Last week, we had the police department come here, and they got accredited for doing a good job. However, when I got onto the police station, I went to the duty officer booth, and I see like six guys in there watching TV.
All right, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much. Your concern should be heard. Any other public comments?
No, I actually have something to give the board, Mr. McDaniel.
Okay, you can give us the board. We go this every meeting, Mr. McDonald.
Let's put it into the record. It's actually something that you guys have probably already heard of. It says, "I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, perform the duties of the office to which I have been elected or appointed in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Wilmington, the terms of the town charter, the general laws of the Commonwealth, and what I consider most important in the Constitution of the United States." So, I'll let you guys take this.
I took that, although I enjoy the military, too, Mr. McDonald. I understand.
You could take one, you could pass it down.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. Any other public comments?
I think it would be good to look at and read it every day.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Yeah, actually, I had another couple of questions.
All right, thank you. No, you're all set.
No, you don't want to let me?
Okay. New business committee reports. You're all set, Mr. McDonald. Thank you.
Is this too important for you to handle?
I'm all set, thank you. Nothing. Public, I'm sorry, new business committee reports.
Nothing, nothing from me. Thank you.
Once again, I have the distinct pleasure of trying to say something positive after something not necessarily positive. I just want to commend all those participants that took part in the Town Cleanup Day on October 1st. I also want to commend all those that participated in the library fair. I thought it was, both events went really great, and I'm proud of the people of Wilmington that volunteered. I also wanted to take note of something that I caught in a municipal department newsletter. I thought it was interesting and I thought worth sharing. It hasn't really come up, I don't think, for any of us in our body, but perhaps it's something that we maybe ought to be making ourselves more aware of as time goes on, and it's effectively, "The Attorney General has proposed regulations that, if adopted, would allow members of municipal public bodies that provide reasonable advance notice to the body's chair to participate fully in public meetings, including having the right to vote, and participating in executive session without attending in person." And there's a list of contingencies and things that have to be in place in order for that to be authorized. That's if this gets adopted. I just thought it interesting in the context of advanced technology and all the things that are going on in our marketplace, that wouldn't it be interesting if in not-too-distant future that we may have, whether it's this body or a school committee or perhaps other government bodies in town, having a member who's remote, perhaps in the hospital or for some other reason can't be physically at the meeting, but able to Skype in or whatever the technology is, and be able to participate fully in the meeting and vote? And, you know, I just, I think it's worthy of recognizing that, at the state level, they're researching and looking into ways to make this plausible and realistic, and I'm excited for it personally. And lastly, I'm going to take my selectman hat off for a brief moment, and I'm going to put on my, I'm a member of the, I'm a, on the board of directors of the Chamber of Commerce, and as you all know, we had our annual 5K and half marathon a few weeks ago, which was very well-attended, and everyone that participated had a great day. It was a little bit warm, but we were able to generate, the Chamber of Commerce was able to generate a very good return on the investment, and in exchange, what the plans for that return are to reinvest back into the community in the form of a number of different scholarships, and in a great appreciation to all of those individuals throughout the town who worked so very hard in helping us prepare for and ultimately clean up after and really put on a very good event. I have the great pleasure of presenting a check for a $1,000, last year it was 500, a $1,000 scholarship from the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce to the Town of Wilmington Scholarship Fund, and I will present that to, I'm not sure who over here, but I want to say thank you very much for the town's support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, on behalf of the board and the town, all the hard work that you and the chamber do, things like that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All set. Very good. I'd just like to disagree with what the speaker mentioned about a massive heroin problem in Wilmington. I mean, I'm sure there are issues in every town, and I think our police department does a nice job as witness to our last meeting where they got the accreditation in many different fields, and one of them, obviously, is drug awareness through our school system. And I'd also like to thank all the members of the board and Bev for wearing some pink article of clothing tonight for the Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the month of October. And thank you. Important dates?
We are continuing with the brush drop-off at the recycling center on Old Main Street. And just to remind folks that it is on successive Wednesdays and Saturdays in October. On Wednesdays, it is from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, it is from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The High School Building Project's Public Information Meeting, the next meeting, will be held October 13th. That's this Thursday at the High School Auditorium, beginning at 6:30 p.m. It will be a comprehensive discussion of where we are at this point. The High School Building Committee has submitted its report, including its schematic design at this stage, on October 7th to the MSBA. The MSBA now is in the process of reviewing that. We will discuss everything from project, anticipated project cost, to the financing plan, to the impact on debt and on the taxpayer, as well as a major discussion on the site itself, the particular adjacencies within the building, and the building imageries, and other issues related to building a 21st century school. So, you are encouraged to attend. Information is also available on the website. Also, just to notice that the registration deadline for recreation basketball for grades, children in grades three through 10, is approaching. That also is on the 13th, this Thursday, and you should register through the Recreation Department. The first of the two town clinics are going to be held on October 20th. This is a schooled-based flu clinic for our children in grades K through 12 that will be held at the Wilmington Middle School from 2:30 to 5:30. You must preregister. If you have any questions about that, you can contact either your school nurse or the Board of Health, but the registration forms are available on the school website. On the 22nd, it'll be the town-wide flu clinic that will be held here at town hall from noon to 3:00 p.m. Anyone from the town of Wilmington is invited to participate, and we encourage you to come by at that time. The board--
Mike, do you have the preregister for that as well?
No, thank you, yes. That's a good point. The town-wide flu clinic, there is no preregistration required. It's just a walk-in. You may be subject to waiting in line for a while, but it is from noon to 3:00 p.m. The Saracota Lecture Series continues with a program on October 28th, The Singing Trooper. It'll be at the Middle School Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. Many of you remember hearing him when he sang at the opening of the Public Safety Building back in 2001. This is free of charge to all Wilmington residents, to anybody, really, but Wilmington residents are certainly encouraged to attend if they're interested. It's a family program, and it's open to all. The police department, in conjunction with the Board of Health, are sponsoring the National Drug Takeback Day that will be held on the 29th, Saturday, at the Public Safety Building from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Please, if you have expired or unused medication in your medicine cabinets or in your home, this is a time in which you can properly dispose of them. Bring them down, no questions asked. They are disposed of. This is an anonymous program, and again, it's free. The police department, the police officers will be available. If you have any questions about that, you can contact either the police department or the Board of Health. And then finally, on October 30th, a Sunday, the Horribles Parade will be held beginning at Rotary Park, where Wilmington youngsters in costume with their families are invited to assemble at 4:30, march up the street to the high school cafeteria where they will be treated with goodies and lots of fun. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining and real property issues, not to return to open session. So moved.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor? A voice vote?
Yes.
Unanimous?